I call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, August 10th, and the time is 6:00 P. M. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website as soon as possible. Welcome, members of the community here tonight to observe the important work being done on behalf of all school district stakeholders. Dr. Hillman, we have some items in the table file. Would you like to update us?
We do. We have an updated February 2025 financial report. There was an inadvertent error in that report that prompted the revenue for Community Service Fund to be displayed incorrectly. We also have some appointments, some increased, decreased, change in assignment, and we have some resignations.
If there are no objections, we will add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
Motion.
Move by Jeff, thank you. Second?
Second.
Second by Maggie, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes. Next is our public comment section of our agenda, and I do have a couple of people who have signed up. I'll call you up momentarily. I'm going to read our public comment guidelines first. "This is an opportunity for residents, business, and/or property owners, parents, guardians, students, and employees of the Northfield School District to address the board. All comments to the board must adhere to the guidelines set in place by District Policy 206 regarding public comment. This is not a time to debate an issue, but only for the board to hear your comments. You are prohibited from making comments about specific students, staff, and administrators. The board requests and values input, but when it relates to a specific individual or a specific matter, this input must be heard by the appropriate personnel, including the building principal or superintendent, and not during an open meeting of the school board. You will be gavelled out of order if your comments are not in compliance with these guidelines. Please address the board from the podium. After being recognized by the board chair, identify yourself and if you represent a group. We require that you limit your remarks to three minutes. You are not allowed to yield your time to another person. It is expected that members of the public will address their remarks with civility and respect. Personal attacks by anyone addressing the board are unacceptable. The board has allotted up to a total of 30 minutes for public comment at regular school board meetings. I will now begin to call those who have signed up to speak in the order in which they signed in. Vice Chair Cory Butler will be monitoring the speaker's time. He will signal each speaker with the time they have remaining in one-minute, 30-second, and 10-second intervals. Again, please make your comments as brief as possible, but no more than three minutes." Okay, Karen Mater. Welcome.
I'm Karen Mater, and you all know me. My kids graduated in 2009, 2011. I'm a grandma now, and my concern is gun violence is a public health issue. And I'm just here as a progress report. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to look at any of the things that I've given you earlier in the year, but I have had an opportunity to connect through Malia Fallon. I connected with Emily Culver, who's going to be the youth engagement or person at HCI, and she has her first meeting with youth that will be on the Mayor's Council coming up now in August. So she is going to approach them about, you know, how much buy-in on the student pledge or youth in that generation that can participate. I also spoke this morning to John Mahal about the who's going to be the coach for the, you know, the championship shooting team. And honestly, the Minnesota State High School skeet and clay target teams have just an incredible safety record. You know, what a great opportunity to use people who handle firearms, store them safely, can teach our younger people how important that is, what the risks are. I just see such value in getting youth buy-in to this. So those are sort of the progress I have not. I don't know who the PTO president is, but that would be sort of another initiative. I'm going to be out of the country for about a month, so I won't be around for the next meetings. Maybe somebody else will be. But and then I know Dr. Hillman said he would make time for me sometime in the near future. So this is sort of just a progress report. Thanks.
Okay, next we have Rich Graves.
Hi, I'm Rich. I'm not a mom, but I'm here with the Karens. So I think I should open with the appropriate football metaphor. So I have some experience with gun violence going back to the 90s when whatever. We won't get into specific cases, but there was this murder of, oops, sorry, murder of Kim Baroney, a domestic violence victim who unfortunately did not survive because the police did not intervene to protect her life. And so some of my friends and I at school worked together in kind of a Scooby-Doo fashion to, you know, figure out how to decrypt her diary and see, yes, they were being gaslit, and they went to the cops, and the cops didn't do anything. So anyway, that's one example of how gun violence can affect people either indirectly, at least by carelessly through schools. Fortunately, in the state of Minnesota, we are a little more level-headed than some of the people in California that I grew up with. As far as I know, there have been shootings on playgrounds, but as far as I recall, the only actual mass shooting in school was the Indian Reservation where someone stole a gun from their grandfather, who was a tribal cop. So kudos to all of us in the state of Minnesota. Yeah, there are no specific cases or employees we can discuss, but I think there are some issues where there have been armed people on the school campus who did not necessarily comply with the contract as a contractor of the Northfield Public Schools. And I think Claudia talked about that, had some concerns, but then the former president of the school board answered those concerns. You might want to look at that contract because you might be able to get a little bit of money back from that vendor, the city of Northfield. I'm also paying that vendor. I had a bunch of subcontractors from that vendor at my house today, mapping out where the sewer line and the water and gas lines go from my house. So there is some basic infrastructure that the city of Northfield provides for the schools that I think everyone is complying with policies now. We have had some staff changes on both sides, but that's just great. Oh, I forgot the football metaphor. So I went to school in California with Johnny Lynch of the San Francisco 49ers. He's the general, he doesn't work at a school anymore. He used to, he used to kind of be a red shirt like me on the stand for a football team with Cory Booker. Anyway, that's about it. But we went to school with another woman who is not a mom, but Condi Rice, who kind of taught a class about war gaming, like stopping genocide in the former Yugoslavia. So that's another example of violence that we discuss in schools that we don't want to happen. Thank you.
Okay, those were the only sign-ups I had for public comments. So we're on to item four, which is our announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, two announcements this evening. Today, we welcomed 141 of our anticipated 208 kindergarten students to the Bridges to Kindergarten Program. The Bridges to Kindergarten Program is run through Northfield Community Ed, and it's a free program that is held at each of the three elementary schools. It's a one-week program designed to help both kindergartners and families have a little bit of an easier transition to their new school and to kindergarten in general. So I heard it was a successful day today. Just want to thank all of the teachers, the EAs, and all the other community education staff who are working to make that program possible. For a period of time, we only had it at one building. For the last several years, we've been able to have incoming kindergartners go to this program at the building that they will attend in September. So really a great program just to help the transition to kindergarten. And finally, just want to call people's attention to a really great local podcast. So KYM Radio's Trek Through Time. That program recently highlighted the history of the Northfield High School Rock and Roll Revival. And it's, the podcast features Ray Coudray and Sherry Satchel, and they talk about the history of Rock and Roll Revival. It's 30th anniversary this year, and it was, the podcast was recorded to coincide with the Northfield History Center's exhibit on Rock and Roll Revival. So it's just so exciting to see the ongoing community pride that we have in this one-of-a-kind program right here in Northfield. So take a chance to listen to KYM's Trek Through Time is what it's called, and then visit the Northfield History Center's exhibit on Rock and Roll Revival and its history. So those are your announcements for this evening.
Thank you. Board members, do you have any announcements or recognitions? All right, very good. Then we will move on to our next item, which is our items for discussion and reports, and we only have one item tonight. I will present the annual performance summary. It is in the board packet, so available to the community at any time, and I will read quite a bit of it. So the superintendent is the sole employee of the Northfield Public School Board of Education, and the district's day-to-day operations are delegated to Dr. Hillman. The current board members are tasked to evaluate him on a semi-annual and annual basis. For this review, all board members submitted an evaluation, and then I worked with Kelly Stillman Kramer, the executive assistant, to compile and summarize the board members' evaluations. And then we used numeric ratings. The means were calculated, and I shared the written comments with Dr. Hillman, but I did not attribute those to any specific board member. Dr. Hillman received an excellent evaluation, achieving an overall rating of 4.9 out of 5. I will highlight one focus area and one job responsibility. The academic year 2024-2025 had two important events that Dr. Hillman managed superbly. During the summer and fall of 2024, Dr. Hillman organized over 92 events, including 26 tours of the high school, to educate the community on the reimagined high school bond referendum, one of his focus areas. His commitment to students and staff was on display as he connected with district stakeholders. The end result was that all three bond referendum questions passed on November 5th, 2024. Question one passed with nearly 60% approval. Question two passed with 54% approval, and question three passed with 56% approval. Quite an achievement in the education part and the support. Board members had this to say about Dr. Hillman on the completion of this focus goal, an important event in our district. Matt did an outstanding job, and the board is appreciative of his efforts with support of district staff to educate the community about the questions on the ballot and the needs of the district. This helped voters make an informed decision based on their own judgments and willingness to support, and overwhelmingly, our community came through. Kudos. Another board member put it this way. "Dr. Hillman put forth a truly outstanding effort during the bond referendum campaign. Community members had ample opportunity to learn about the needs of the district and the impact of the proposed referendum. We will all benefit from the excellent work he did to communicate with district stakeholders during this educational campaign." One of Dr. Hillman's key responsibilities is to oversee the preparation and presentation of the annual budget for school board approval, including projections of the district's future financial position. He and Director of Finance Val Murdestor presented the board with the need to reduce the 2025-26 budget by $6 million, a painful but necessary reduction to support students and staff now and into the future. This process highlighted Dr. Hillman's solid relationship with the community, transparent communication style, and stellar partnership with the Director of Finance. District stakeholders participated in creating a proposal of reductions. Thanks to Dr. Hillman's organization and foresight, community members felt welcome to give their perspective and understood the why, even as they advocated for valued staff and programs. Board members commented like this. "Dr. Hillman ensured that our community had numerous opportunities to provide input, and this input significantly influenced the final outcome. The process was handled so smoothly that everyone felt heard. As a result, Dr. Hillman has been invited to speak about this process to other districts." Another board member summed it well, saying, "Matt and Val together make an excellent team in this area." And I think we navigated the recent budget reductions amazingly well-given, all of the painful choices we had to make. Again, engagement of the community was key to ensuring that the final decision of the board was a true reflection of many perspectives. The Northfield School Board of Education's evaluation of Dr. Hillman concludes that our district is managed well by a respected and engaged leader whose focus is on doing good things for kids. We have full confidence in Dr. Hillman's leadership. The school board is grateful for Dr. Hillman's excellent performance in all focus areas and the responsibilities, and we look forward to district staff doing great things this next academic year under your leadership. Thank you so much for all your work.
My pleasure.
Board members, I'll open the floor if you have some comments. Otherwise, we can move on to item six, our consent agenda. Okay, very good. As a reminder, there were some personnel items added in the table file. Sorry, as there were some, there's some personnel items in the table file added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping for separate consideration? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Okay, move by Ben. Second?
Second.
Second by Jenny, thank you. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes. Okay, moving right along. Next is our items for individual action. Board members, make sure your mic is on so that Kelly can record your vote. We have three items to consider tonight. The first item, I'll take a motion, and then we can discuss. And that is, is there a motion to approve the proposed procedure for spending, advertising, and sponsorship revenue at Northfield Public Schools?
So moved.
Thank you, Cory. Second? Thank you, Ben. Okay, this item was presented to the board on July 14th, and we can have any comments or questions at this time. Will you be facilitating, Dr. Hillman?
I think between Val and I, I just think it's just important for the public to know. Again, as Claudia said, we had a detailed presentation about this last month, and it's really designed to set the guidelines when we do receive advertising revenue, how those funds are assigned, and the document, you know, clearly highlights how those things would go. Val, do you want to give any other updates?
No.
Essentially, it's where the advertising revenue comes from is where it would be assigned. So for people who take advertising space in the community education bulletin, the community education department would receive that funding for activities. Any activities related advertising that would go back into the activities funds, which of course then would relieve the general fund, you know, from some of that responsibility for paying for activities expenses. So be happy to answer any questions that board members have.
Any questions at this time? Amy?
I know we had a lot of discussion last time, and I'm just wondering if Lance has any comments to bring back to us from our discussion.
Not too many comments. We have been floating this out there, specifically starting with naming rights Memorial Field and the video board, putting them more in front of people, and there's definitely some excitement with that, let's say. They want that to be the players, for pun totally intended, that would put their bid in for Memorial Field. They want that bidding process done first before we move on to any of the baseball or softball fields. So that's kind of where things are, we're waiting for you guys to make a decision.
Anyone else comment or question? Ben?
Just kind of a document question. So this is a procedure that's attached to policy 809.1, is that right? So that live is an appendix to that policy? Yeah, just curious.
Yep, typically with the procedures, they're hyperlinked on the website, kind of under the, like a bullet point under the policy. Yep. And it'll just say procedures for policy 809.1.
Gotcha. That's helpful, just for folks know where to go find.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks.
Anyone else comment or question? Then we will move on to a vote. There's a motion on the floor in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Right, motion passes. All right, next is the digital video scoreboard purchase at Memorial Field. The board has requested to approve the allocation of $412,000 in the 2026-27 budget to purchase an updated digital video scoreboard at Memorial Field. The cost of the scoreboard will be reimbursed to the general fund from revenue generated through advertisements. Is there a motion to approve the allocation of funding in the 26-27 budget to purchase an updated digital video scoreboard at Memorial Field? Okay, move by Ben. Second by Maggie, thank you. Okay, board members, do you have any questions or any discussion that you want to carry out for this item? And you have some comments as well?
So again, I just want to reiterate to the folks here and the folks watching at home that we did a detailed discussion on this topic at the last meeting, and want to emphasize that we're reserving money from the operating capital budget to be able to make that purchase. Now, it's going to be from the, okay, this is, I wanted Val to talk about.
Sorry. No, we are proposing this out of the general fund and then using the revenue that it generates to pay it off in up to five years. Five years would be the maximum. We would hope it would come in a little faster, but conservatively, we're estimating five years. And we would be documenting that in an assigned fund balance category so we could clearly see the impact that had on the financial statements.
And I think the important part is for the community is, again, during the budget process, we heard from people saying, "We really hope you can develop additional revenue streams," right? Places where outside of the typical funding that we would be able to secure some resources. And this is one of those examples where you have to put a little bit of money into something in order to have a longer-term return on that investment through advertisement. So just want the community to know, we discussed this in detail the last time. There's a plan for it to be paid back through the advertisement and then generate basically net additional revenue once it's paid off.
Questions or comments at this time? Amy?
I have two questions. The first is, what happens to the old scoreboard? Does it just stay there? And the second one is, I had asked last time if there's any chance that we can have some functionality on the back of the scoreboard, and I know that was a long shot, but I thought I would ask to see if you had any chance at that, to welcome people as they're arriving at the stadium.
Yeah, right now, the old scoreboard, right now, there isn't a current plan. We actually talked about that earlier today, just in discussion with him and I out there on the football field. We, I think we need to do some further discussion about that, about its age and if it does need parts. Going forward, that scoreboard is obviously at least 20 years old, if not 25. So we're not sure if we would move it and use it somewhere else, if that'd actually be a viable thing to invest in. And then the part about the video or the message board on the backside, Mr. Mahal did reach out about that, and we're still looking to hear back about that. We're still looking into it, so we don't have a definitive answer about the cost or the design about that yet, so. Yeah.
Anyone else question or comment? Okay, Ben?
Lance, just a follow-up question. Reminded us this last time, but the lifespan of kind of a scoreboard like this, like last time, it said like 20-ish plus years or?
Yeah, I would say a pretty easy 20. Video boards are evolving, but, and this is, like I said last time, too, this company has been around a while. It's not prevalent in the state of Minnesota. It's more in Iowa and Missouri, but there are some here. But this, we've done the due diligence on it, the fact that the software side of it is updatable. And the one piece that we were very concerned about was the software in that we wanted it to work as much as the cost, because we didn't want to buy something, it would be cheaper, but then it didn't work. That defeats the purpose, so. But it is updatable, and the scoreboards that we've seen at other communities, this is a very, a good, solid, middle-of-the-road, like it's going to be good.
Okay. And then just one more question for Val. He said five years. If I look at the chart here, like year set, year two is actually next year when we purchase it, but then we'd be kind of paid off by year seven, it looks like, at least on that graph, if I read that right. 2031, 32.
Um, let me pull that up. I didn't have that open yet.
Page 49 of the board packet. I think while you do that, then obviously then every year after, we're estimating somewhere between 115,000 and 142,000 in terms of actual advertising revenue, once that's paid for.
Yes. I was opening individual documents, so page 49 didn't help. Yes, I think our, so are you saying it had six years of payback showing?
I mean, it probably counted on my fingers, but.
That's a solid way. Yeah, I think originally I felt we had talked about five, but, again, it's conservative. We wanted to make sure that it was conservative, and part of the estimate also includes taking some out for the operational, covering all of that, so that's not just coming out of the general fund moving forward either. And so I think all those things go into play, and what's not included in that model is the money that we're already collecting. So there's nothing saying that we can't use some of the money we've already been receiving for the other advertising opportunities to help offset that. That was kind of part of our, the procedure document to help assign what we can and can't do with that. And so I do think it'll be five or less, but again, I'd much rather be conservative.
And I think if you look at the graph, I think, you know, it includes year one, which was last year, essentially the planning piece in the 25-26 part. So year one and year two, right, this is year one. Oh, yeah, I can plug it in. I suppose I'm looking at the.
Yeah, you're all right, yeah. Yeah, they'd be paid off, and when it's on its own, using the money from the scoreboard, it'd be paid off, looking at, yeah, in the 2031, 2032 school year, is that what you're seeing, right? Yeah, and but pretty, we're very confident in year with under five years, if you count everything we're doing collectively, so.
And then as far as estimate and cost, that's still pretty, I've received an updated quote recently.
I have not received an updated quote.
That'll be part of the conversation, reconnecting with them, having more conversation to see where that number is now. But we should be, unless it just goes way, way up, we should still be able to be under that number that you potentially approved tonight.
Okay, sounds good. I just went, I only ask these questions because I want to be cognizant of the exercise that we just went through this last spring in terms of looking at $5.8 million of budget reduction. You know, this, this to me is an investment, I mean, but certainly one that comes with an initial cost, something I support, but just want to recognize that that's part of the calculus.
And certainly if the, if the quote comes back and it's dramatically different, we would reevaluate and make sure that the board's updated and still on board with that, that plan, but at the current time, we don't believe it would change significantly.
I'm just wondering if this would be covered by our current insurance, or if we have to get a special insurance because it's such a high-ticket item, how that works?
Nope, I don't think we would have to get like separate insurance. It would go under our property casually. We have like an overall value for the high school, and so we would notify our insurance agency that we bought an expensive piece of equipment that we want to make sure is valued appropriately on the property.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, anyone else comment or question? Great, thank you so much. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, motion passes. Our next item and last item is our policy committee recommendations. Is there a motion to approve the committee's recommendation, recommended changes to the following policies, 414, 418, 436, 437, 438, 447, 491, 503, 515, 516, and 534? Okay, thank you, Amy. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Cory. Board members, do you have any questions or comments on any of these policies at this time?
And just as a reminder to the public, we reviewed all of these in detail last month as well. When we don't have two board meetings a month, I like to remind people.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Next is our items for information, and we have a construction update number 13.
Yes, I'm going to leave the report stand. I do want to share with the board that beginning in September, we're going to start to give some greater detailed updates about, we're coming to the close of schematic design. So in September, we're going to bring the core planning group back together for them to get an update, seeing some new drawings, some of the first renderings. Well, we have a renderings meeting this week. We'll also do some updates for staff, some presentations, and then we're also looking for some strategic places to be able to provide the community with some updates. So for example, Northfield High School is trying parent-teacher conferences a little bit earlier this year in late September, just a few weeks after the school year gets started. We're anticipating the potential of having an update station there. So for people who have been wondering about, you know, right now, we've got a lot of technical things happening behind the scenes, but you'll start to see some more substantial updates in the next first few weeks in September. So stay tuned, it's very exciting, some good things happening, and people will start to see what the shape and substance of the project is really looking like.
Thank you. Any questions on the construction report? All right. Our next item is our staff breakfast and program. We are, we will welcome back staff for the 25-26 school year on Tuesday, August 26th at 7:00 a.m. 7:00 a.m., 7 to 10 at the Northfield Middle School. The board is invited to join. And item C is our e-learning plan for the 25-26 year. Superintendent Hillman will share the e-learning plan. The use of the e-learning plan was approved by the board in unison with the 24-25 school year calendar in December of 2023, and we are required to share this plan each year with, the district is required to share this plan each year with the board and post it on the website.
Yeah, so in the packet, we have a familiar-looking document. It is the standard e-learning guidelines that we've used for the last several years. The plan for next year is nearly exactly the same as this year. So again, the first full-day closure due to weather is a good old-fashioned Minnesota snow day, and then the second and subsequent full-day cancellations would be under the e-learning guidelines. Parents will get a copy of this in their update this week, and then of course, continue as we go toward, maybe winter will hold off this year, but I don't think it will. So, you know, we haven't needed to use, last year, we used one of these days. It's, you know, it's been a few years since we've had anything substantial, but we continue to update the plan and make sure it's translated and shared in an appropriate way. So the biggest change this year is that we're going to be moving to Google Meet versus Zoom, so that'll be probably the most significant change. And then also just want to highlight that we are not doing a practice e-learning day this year. Last year on the calendar, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, we did kind of an e-learning day rehearsal, to give people a chance, without the pressure of that early morning call, to log in and to test all of the things. We got feedback on that. It wasn't that it was unsuccessful, but it wasn't successful enough to warrant using a full school day for that this year. So that was not part of this year's calendar, and we will not be having that e-learning rehearsal day this year. So funny to talk about that in August, but better be prepared.
Thank you. Board members, do you have any questions or comments? Very good. Item nine is our future meetings. Our next three regular board meetings will be in the same district office boardroom at 6:00 p.m. Those dates are Monday, August 25, Monday, September 8, and Monday, September 22. And that's all the business that we have tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Second. Second by Jenny, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are adjourned.